Call this May 12th Board of Education meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include an operations report that provides a facility update on Oconee County, Oconee Elementary School. I recommend that the operations report be placed after the business services report on the agenda.
Ms. Parrish has made another motion. Do I have her second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero. Need a motion to approve the amendments.
So move.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Ms. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero. Recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. We have several recognitions this evening, so if you'll step forward, we'll begin introducing those folks. As you come forward, I'll note that this month's art display is provided by the students from Rocky Branch Elementary School. You can see we've got some very talented artists at Rocky Branch. And you're going to hear a little bit more about the art program there later from their sponsor, Ms. Dixon. First, this evening, board will recognize the Malcolm Bridge Elementary School bookkeeper, Allison Hodges, as the May Pursuit of Excellence Award winner for Student Services. She will receive a $50 Visa gift card and a golf umbrella provided by Peach State Federal Credit Union, additional gift cards from Chops and Hops and Rosie's Hometown Meats, and a commemorative plaque from Oconee County Schools. So for colleagues, share this information with us from Ms. Hodges. Malcolm Bridge Elementary is beyond blessed to have Allison Hodges as our bookkeeper and so much more. If you spend any time in an elementary school office, you know that you're never just a bookkeeper. Allison also serves as secretary, registrar, nurse, custodian, cafeteria worker, and whatever else is needed. She is the epitome of professionalism and truly gives 110% to our school every single day. She is the leader of our office and the glue that holds everyone together. She goes above and beyond the requirements of her job to make sure all teachers have what they need and are supported. Allison is kind and always has the "how can I help you" mentality. She goes above and beyond to pursue excellence each day, ensuring that the Oconee County mission is carried out and that students, above all else, are loved and taken care of. The May Pursuit of Excellence Award winner, Allison Hodges. Next, the board will recognize the FBLA state medalist from Dove Creek Middle School, Eshawn Shaw, first place in interpersonal communication, Kenley McCray, third place in business etiquette, and Tony Zai, third place in exploring economics. Their advisor is Scott Burrell. Next, the board will recognize the FFA junior poultry judging state champions from Oconee County Middle, Aliza Casio, Tyler Gay, Bennett Stoll, and Davis Waters. Their advisor is David Chapman. Next, the board will recognize the DECA state medalist from Oconee County High School, Rohan Patel, first place in Principles of Finance, Samuel Cooper Powell, first place in Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, and Annie Rose Johnson and Ella Davis, first place in team decision-making, hospitality, and tourism. Their advisor is Josh Bentley. Next, the board will recognize Deir Marotra of Malcolm Bridge Middle for placing first in Georgia in the Daughters of the American Revolution Essay Contest. Board members, since we received this information, Deir has also won the national championship for all sixth graders. His sponsor this evening is Eric Shermer. Next, the board will recognize the Class 4A state champions in gymnastics from North Oconee High School, Mia Albert, Ava Arenas, Adely Bufford, Maddie Burke Weeks, Ella Hawkins, Emma Howells, Danny Ivy, Hadley Keller, Hannah Moffett, Tatum Poe, Fabiana Pombo, Kylie Rodan, Emery Shepherd, Savannah Williams, and Morgan King. The coaches are Hillary Sanders and Ashley Owens. Next, the board will recognize the Class 3A GHSA literary champions in quartet from Oconee County High, Anon Fazula, Memphis Gober, Pedro Mercado, and Tyler Sage Wyatt. Their advisor is Katie Williams. And board members, that concludes recognitions.
Let me recognize some of my favorite parts. Next, we have points of pride with Rocky Branch Elementary School. Welcome.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. My name is Sarah Johnson, and I'm the principal at Rocky Branch Elementary School. I am joined tonight by Assistant Principal Candace Ivory, Art Teacher Stephanie Dixon, Music Teacher Josh Luke, and students who are part of our tank gang from Finding Nemo. Tonight, we will highlight the work of our fine arts program for the experiences it offers our students, as well as the integration of the arts into the STEAM initiative at Rocky Branch. Our teachers work to expose our students to all elements of fine arts, as emphasized by the Georgia Department of Education. Students attend an art and music class each week through our connections rotation, but they continue to be exposed to these components of fine arts through our STEAM initiative at Rocky Branch. That A in STEAM means that we purposely integrate the arts into our content.
This year, as part of the first grade unit on sound, we discovered an authentic connection to the arts. Teachers taught the standards, and then students used the knowledge on sound to create a bell in art, as seen here. Students then performed a song using the bell that they made in music class. In second grade, students learned about the life cycles of butterflies. They then performed a song learned in music class from the movie Encanto that tells the story of caterpillars growing to become butterflies. We also use community partners to expose our students to the arts beyond the classroom. In addition to supporting our unit planning, our community partners attend our career day, as well as our fine arts night.
As the art teacher, one of my standards is to introduce students to careers in the arts. I like to expose my students to modern-day working artists, not just the old dead ones. In fourth grade, I teach the history of one-point perspective through Raphael's famous painting, The School of Athens. Students practice the drawing skills of creating a horizon line, a vanishing point, and receding lines until they get the hang of this perspective trick. Next, I introduce them to a modern-day artist named Grant Hafner, who creates landscapes with exaggerated neon bands of color that remind him of the country roads where he grew up. Students create their own landscapes and then apply Hafner's bold use of bright colors with special neon paints and oil pastels. We discuss how he has made a career out of his artwork. This could be them one day.
In our music classes, we have some pretty visible evidence of fine arts, and we do that through grade-level musicals and smaller performances. Perhaps the most visible program that we have in the performing arts is our chorus program. We perform at school and throughout the community. We are pretty active in singing the National Anthem. We did the Rock Lobsters this year, and actually, we have a big group of across the county folks that are going to be doing the National Anthem for the Braves coming up. So that's some evidence of performing arts. And so here today, I have some students from our Finding Nemo production that we just finished, and this is, as Ms. Johnson said, our tank gang. So I'd like to introduce Mackenzie Flippen. You can come on up. Leighton Loder, Peyton Stevens, Brooke Engici, Mackenzie Mead, MJ Trust, and Harlan Skinner.
Next, we have presentations and discussions. Mr. Adams, good luck. Tough act to follow.
Two tough acts to follow, two singing groups. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. The Business Service Report for May 12th, 2025 contains eight items of information and two action items for tonight's board meeting. The first item of information is the April cash balances report. As of April 30th, the closing cash balance represents a 2.39% decrease over last month. State funding projections are currently stable, and our cash balance for April is strong, and we are well-positioned to meet our financial obligations for this fiscal year. The second item of information is a list of all vendor payments in April. We paid 460 vendors $1.5 million for the month. The third item of information is the budget report for April. Revenue collections are positive, with 94% collection rate so far this fiscal year. Expenditures would be expected to be at 83% for the month. Our monthly report shows us at 81.4%. This indicates that we are on target for the period, maintaining a balanced financial position. We will continue to monitor these figures as we move forward towards year-end. Our fourth item of information is our ELOS collections report. We've had an increase of 14.92% in collections over last month and a 13.49% increase over April of last year. The fifth item of information is our ELOS six report. Revenues and expenditures have been updated through April 30th. Our sixth item of information is our federal funds report. This report provides an update on the federal funding allocation and expenditures for the month of April. These funds are reimbursement-based, and we will see these funds continue to be reimbursed to us throughout the fiscal year. Our seventh item of information is an audit update. We are proud to announce that the fiscal year '24 audit has been successfully completed with no findings. So we are very happy to announce that. Our team's commitment to compliance and accuracy and operational excellence was clearly demonstrated throughout this process. We remain dedicated to upholding the highest standards and are pleased to be recognized for our continued diligence. I'd like to thank all of our teams for all their support and dedication and attention to detail this past fiscal year '24, because without them, we wouldn't have had that audit with no findings. This information is up on our website under the Business Services Audit area. Our eighth item of information is the fiscal year '26 tentative general fund budget and fiscal year '26 federal funds budget. In our April 21st expenditure budget review presentation, we presented the tentative fiscal year '26 budget expenditures, the fiscal year '26 tentative budget for general funds, and federal funds are being presented tonight. The budget hearing information on the budget hearing dates will be advertised in the legal organ this week. The budget hearing dates are set for May 22nd and May 29th. Both meetings will be held here in the boardroom at the Instructional Support Center. Again, this is a continuation of the budget development calendar for the rest of the fiscal year. This slide shows our fiscal year '25 expenditure budget and our fiscal year '26 expenditure continuation expenditures. Staff did an excellent job reviewing their budgets. Without the SRO program and unfunded state mandates, the overall budget would have decreased by $1.1 million. I have attached the expenditure presentation from the 21st for your reference in assembly. And again, just to point out, some of the things that staff did for that, even in maintenance, we had a contract to replace air filters throughout the district. Our new maintenance director, they formed a tiger team, and they'll go to a school, and they'll change the filters themselves and do that, so that saved that contract. So that's some of the due diligence and the hard work that our folks did to review their budgets this fiscal year. Also, in our expenditure budget review presentation, we highlighted areas of additional consideration for the fiscal year '26 tentative budget. During our preparation of the fiscal year '26 tentative budget, the state provided information on what to expect in the governor's budget. As we go forward in this presentation, you will see these expectations from the governor's budget, along with our recommendations for salary steps, health increases, TRS, and school safety. Our first consideration is step increases to all certified and classified salary scales. The cost for additional steps is $1.08 million, with our certified staff at $872,000 and classified staff at $216,000. As of this fiscal year, all salary scales were extended to step 30. By extending our salary scales, we recognize and value our most experienced teachers and staff, and it's a great retention and recruitment tool, and I think Justin could attest to that so far. This slide shows a history of pay raises for the school district for the last 11 years, including what has been proposed for fiscal year '26 step increases for all eligible employees. Our second consideration for the fiscal year '26 tentative budget is a state health insurance increase. The governor's proposed budget included increase in the employer's health insurance contribution for both certified and classified rates. The proposal includes the certified employer rate increasing from 1760 a month to 1885 a month, and that will take effect July 1st, 2025. The proposal also includes the certified employer rate, excuse me, the classified employer rate increasing from $1,580 to 1885, a big jump, also starting July 1st, 2025, for a cost of $1.9 million. Again, total cost for both certified and classified is $3.08 million. This slide shows a history of health insurance increases to the classified employer contribution since 2012. The local cost for health insurance has increased $6.5 million. Our third consideration for the fiscal year '26 tentative budget is the teacher retirement increase. The governor's proposed budget included increase in the TRS employer percentage contribution from 20.78 to 21.91% for a cost of $1.2 million. The certified increase will be provided by the state for all earned positions. This slide shows a history of the TRS employer rate increases. Since 2011, TRS employer contributions for certified staff has increased $5.7 million. Since 2011, TRS employer contributions for certified staff has increased $5.7 million. Our fourth consideration for the Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget is the school safety and security program of $2.5 million. These expenditures include contracts for our SRO program. This amount recommends that we add a fully funded program with the full 16 officer complement. This also reflects an increase of $6,320 from the April presentation as we received information from the Board of Commissioners that they said would provide us by May 1st, so we had that after we had our presentation with you all, but it did increase $6,320 from our prior presentation. Here we have a summary of all considerations for the Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget with expenditures of $7.8 million. Of this $7.8 million, 4.2 million is required increases by the state. The remainder is to provide salary step increases and school resource officer program. Here we have our total expenditures for Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget. Continuation expenditures of $112.6 million plus additional considerations of $7.8 million bring total expenditures to $120.5 million, the same amount we provided to you at the April 1st Expenditure Review Meeting. Just a reminder, continuation budget only represent expenditures if we were to continue from Fiscal Year 25 with no changes. It does not account for, it would not have counted for any staff or operational increases. As you know, we budget expenditures at the functional level. These slides show all the functional areas within Oconee County Schools' budget. These were presented at the Fiscal Year 21st Meeting as the highlighted program areas for us, but these slides show all areas, and our tentative Fiscal Year 26 expenditures are $120.5 million. But as a reminder, the board will adopt the annual budget at the summary level. Of the total expenditures of $120.5 million, salaries and benefits make up $106.6 million, and operations make up $13.8 million. As you may recall, salaries and benefits made up 90% of the continuation budget. With the additional considerations, salaries and benefits are at 88.5% of total expenditures, and operations is at 11.5% due to the addition of the school safety program. The 88.5 covers around 1,100 employees' salaries, TRS, health insurance, and retirement, with the remaining 11.5 allocated to covering all operational costs of the school district at $13.8 million. These costs include district-wide utilities, repairs of maintenance, curriculum, and transportation. Now we will present projected revenue. Total projected revenue for the Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget is $119.1 million. Of that, 53% is state revenue at $62.5 million, and 47% is local revenue at $56.5 million. This slide shows projected revenue in total has increased 5.6 million or 4.9% over Fiscal Year 25 Budget. State revenue for the Fiscal Year 26 Budget is projected at $62.5 million. QBE, or Quality Basic Education Funding, funds make up 95% of state revenue at $59.3 million. QBE funding is funding received from the state based on our student enrollment. Catastrophic grants, which are transportation and nursing, make up 3% at $2.2 million, and our CTAE and security grants through the Department of Education make up 2% at $1 million. QBE funds are net of local fair share. Our fair share rose $300,000 over last year to $13.7 million. This is part of the state QBE, reduces our QBE funding by 5 mils of the equalized net tax digest. Local revenue for Fiscal Year 26 Budget is projected at $56.5 million. Property and ad valorem taxes make up 90% of local revenue at $51 million. Other local revenue make up 8% at $4.3 million. This includes our Title Ad Valorem Tax and Real Estate and Intangible Tax, E-Rate, and our Medicaid reimbursements. Then we have our interest income that makes up 2% at $1.25 million. Just to note, this is an increase of $1.2 million over Fiscal Year 25. This is a history of the tax digest. We've had steady growth since tax year 2014. The Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget is built on an estimated tax digest we received from the Tax Commissioner with an estimated growth of 6.18%. That represents a tax digest value of $3.8 billion. We would like to thank the Tax Commissioner's Office on the work to get us this information. As I said last week, they were struggling with a statewide software issue. They worked very hard to get us this information, and we're very happy that they were able to get it to us late last week. I was at a conference last week in Savannah, and we got to hear from a lot of folks in the room, and we were the only ones that had received their tax digest. So kudos to our Tax Commissioner. The current millage rate is 14.25 mils. The Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget has been built on a proposed rollback millage rate of 13.919 mils. We currently estimate the ending Fiscal Year 25 fund balance at $40 million. Of this $40 million, 13.4 million is set aside in the committed fund balance, and 2.02 million is set aside in the assigned fund balance. This leaves a remaining estimated fund balance of $24.5 million at June 30th, 2025. Committed fund balance is the portion of fund balance that can only be used for specific purposes committed by the board. $13.4 million has been committed for future debt payments on the 2021 general obligation bond. Assigned fund balance is the portion of fund balance that is set aside for future projects and initiatives. $1.1 million has been set aside for the new school generators and $850,000 for intercoms at Malcolm Bridge Middle School and Oconee Middle School totaling $2.02 million in assigned fund balance. This leaves an estimated unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2025, again, I'll say estimated, of $24.5 million. When you add projected revenues of $119.1 million and deduct expenditures of $120.5 million, you come to an estimated fund balance of $23.2 million on June 30th, 2026, which is 19.2% unassigned fund balance. That would leave us with about two and a half months of salary and operational costs for us if we had to worry about that next year. Just a reminder, DOE and business best practices are three to six months of reserves. So we're a little bit short there. Now we'll talk, review our Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget for federal funding. Expenditures and revenues are projected at $7.6 million. Federal funds make up about 6.5% of the budget. We have, on average, nine different grant programs for each fiscal year, and again, these are reimbursement-based. We usually have a lag for when we receive the payment throughout the fiscal year. Sometimes that lag could go two to three months. We're about a month and a half, two months right now lag time on receiving those reimbursements. And that concludes the portion of the review of the Fiscal Year 26 General Budget and Federal Fund Budget, and I have action items if you want me to go to those, or I can answer any questions right now.
I have a comment and then a couple of questions, just to make sure I'm clear. First, just thank you to you and your team for all the work that you've done leading up to our audits. I've looked through those and really, really pleased to see the clean audit, unqualified audit, so congratulations and thank you for all of your work there. You were referencing, one other question on that. With those audits, so those are published, those are finalized, are those on our website yet?
Yes, sir. They're all on our website.
So anybody could go out and could pull those along with prior year audits?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. You had mentioned on Slide 17 that 88.5% of the cost of our budget will go towards personnel and personnel-related expenses. Did I understand you correct that the school resource officer cost does not fall in that bucket, but instead falls in the operational budget?
2.3, yeah, 2.3 million of it, and then we have $200,000 for the, in the morning, their traffic control, and then we have the door checkers program, we call. They're basically the zone patrol, they'll go up and check the doors. Those are salary portion, it's a very little amount, it's about $37,000. So the majority of it falls in operations because of the contract.
Okay, great. That's one of, so we are paying people, it's just the way that we classify, it's going to be different since it's not a direct employee system?
That's correct.
Okay. And then one last question, looking at the federal funds budget, I saw 7.66 million out there with more than 50% of that being school nutrition. I know there have been some updates to the school nutrition piece that we've seen. Have we heard anything about any cuts to any of the reimbursement items out here, knowing that there is a lag in some cases of several months before reimbursed, we are reimbursed for those funds?
We were told that Title I and IDA are going to be fully funded in his budget. The only thing we did here was the local school program was cut about $10,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Our first action item is the Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget for General Funds, for your consideration, which has estimated revenues of $119.1 million and estimated expenditures of $120.5 million, which are based on an estimated rollback rate of 13.919 millage rate, which is a decrease of 2.32% from Fiscal Year 25. Our second action item is the Fiscal Year 26 Tentative Budget for Federal Funds, for your consideration, which includes total anticipated revenues and expenditures of $7.6 million. These grants are reimbursement-based, as we just discussed, and therefore we must outlay the revenue and then wait for reimbursement. I asked the superintendent to recommend approval to adopt the tentative Fiscal Year 26 General Fund Budget and the tentative Fiscal Year 26 Federal Fund Budget. And that concludes my report unless you have any further questions.
I do.
Yes, sir.
So you were talking about the rollback rate at 13.919 mils. So as we're doing this, we are not voting to approve what the millage rate will be. We are simply looking at what the budget is, and then as we continue to look and look into what the tax digest is, we'll begin to look at the revenue side of this in the coming weeks, correct?
This is based on that rollback rate. The budget was built on that, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Next, we have operations, Dr. White.
Yes, sir. Board members, at your request, I'd like to inform you of the work that took place at Oconee County Elementary School related to the gym and outside pod during spring break. In the gym, the floor is older, and some of the previous seam repairs caused staining on those seams. Over spring break, we removed all the old seams, caulked and recaulked all the seams in the gym to ensure that we negated any trip hazards by having a continuous floor. Also know that the gym floor is designed with an impermeable layer to not allow moisture through the flooring. We monitored the humidity levels using the sensor on our HVAC units and a handheld humidity sensor as well, which allowed us to check multiple areas in that space. We also utilized a moisture meter to test a variety of surfaces in the gym, all of which came back within industry norms. The outside pod was renovated in 2022. It was found that carpet tiles in a pod had glue left over from the previous rolled carpet and powder residue left over from the renovation process. Although we were outside of the warranty window, Kevin Price Construction completed the removal, preparation, and replacement of the flooring in honor of our continued and longstanding partnership during spring break. These classrooms are also evaluated for humidity and moisture testing, and we found the classrooms to be at the correct levels as well. Leading up to this work at Oconee Elementary School, our Director of Facilities and Director of Maintenance, who have over 50 years of combined experience in their fields, evaluated conditions for the appropriate actions. We are continuing to monitor both areas. As a reminder, we have a million and a half square feet of heated space, over 35 acres of roofing, and over 1,000 employees in the school system. We continue to investigate concerns based on our facts and data and follow our appropriate industry standard processes. That concludes the operations report unless there are any questions.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What's the moisture thresholds that you mentioned?
So 60% is what ASHRAE uses, and that is the American Society for Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, and by default, we set all our units at 45.
And I have a couple of follow-up questions as well. The first is, what has the communication process been like for staff members and parents around this issue?
So we've had some parents call in. I've talked with several of them. Ms. Lockers, the principal, has also discussed this with them as well.
And if a teacher had a concern about something like this, what is the reporting process for that teacher if they notice something or have some kind of concern about mold or any other kind of issue at the school?
Sure, so typically they would go to an administrator, to the front office, they can put in a work order where our team would evaluate that. If it's a high-level issue with something like this, the principal usually gives us a phone call, and we come out and deploy and evaluate the situation.
Okay, thank you. And you just mentioned sensors on the HVAC, and a few meetings ago, you talked about walk-throughs in the schools, and that may be something you do routinely, I'm not sure, but what will be done moving forward to ensure there aren't dangerous levels of mold at Oconee Elementary School, but also all of our Oconee schools?
Sure, so one of the things that we do is we do do the walk-throughs in all of our schools twice a year. So our first stop when we do those walk-throughs is to stop in with the principal, what are your concerns, what are you seeing? We check our work orders. We have that moisture meter as well, and we also have the humidity sensors that we're checking as well on all our HVAC units inside of our control software. And mold has to have water in order to grow, so that's why we're continuing to look at humidity levels.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Dr. White.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have communications to the board, Mr. Calkin.
Thank you, Mr. Ransome. We have six Oconee County residents signed up to speak before the board this evening. Before I invite them up, I'll read this. Policies BCBI and BCBIR-1 state that only Oconee County residents or school system employees may address the board and that members of the public shall conduct themselves in a respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. The board allows three minutes for those who sign up prior to the meeting. Please state your name, address, and topic. The board requests that you refrain from making any disparaging remarks about school system personnel. Surely there will be no response to comments or questions posed by citizens at the meeting. All comments and questions will be taken under advisement by the board. However, any board member shall be free to respond and make public comments if he or she elects to do so. To any citizen wishing to provide documents for board members, please submit them to the Director of Communications before the meeting or prior to addressing the board. Please remain at the podium during your public comment time. Our first speaker this evening is Caitlin Farmer.
Welcome, Caitlin.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin Farmer. I live at 1020 Sudlers Pass, Athens, Georgia, 30606. I come to you today to express my continued concern with Oconee County Schools' lack of compliance with open records and open meetings laws. I come to you as a graduate of North Oconee High School, as a daughter, as a friend to OCS teachers, staff members, parents, and children. I come to you on behalf of the community you represent, including the legal organ, the Oconee Enterprise. I come to you begging. On multiple occasions, the Oconee Enterprise has experienced a lack of compliance when requesting documents, as you're all aware of many others that are in the same boat. We have consistently included you on requests, begging for your help accessing documents. On multiple occasions, we have been told by your open records manager, Stephen Colquitt, that you do not have policies that are required by law. Oconee County Schools has no policy related to records management. That is illegal. OCS is required by federal and state law to have policies and procedures involving collection and storage of records, including emails, text messages, written letters, employment files, student records, and more. We have sent you copies of the state law. All of these All of these, with the narrow exception of limited redaction of personal data, are considered public records. Bought and paid for with tax dollars. Even your emails about board work, your text messages about board work, your call logs and written notes are all public and all must be preserved in accordance with state law at the minimum. When you say you do not have a policy for system-wide storage, you are either in extreme violation of foundational laws that govern our society, or you are just plain lying. Both are extremely concerning. Initially, we believed that the school board may have been in the dark about how bad the issue was. The best-case scenario being that you put your trust in staff that were either ignorant to the law or were trained to obfuscate at all costs. But we have spoken with you all, and Mr. Hammond was the only person willing to respond and attempt to resolve the issue. It seems that you all have not been trained on Georgia sunshine laws. As we have told you via email, there are multiple state agencies ready to provide you training. This isn't normal. If the leadership in this building is telling you it is normal, do not believe them. At the end of the day, it is on you to understand and uphold the law. The truth is, we do this every day. Every single day, we request documents from government agencies, from our local cities and towns, the county, other school systems, law enforcement, state agencies, and even federal agencies. None of them, and I'm not exaggerating, none of them behave this way. Many provide documents without even requiring an open records request. When they do, they provide swift and easy access, even when the documents are related to difficult topics. That is normal. This is us begging you, again, to solve this issue, and we will keep begging until it is corrected. This isn't complicated, it doesn't have to be difficult. Please, please take action, do better. At some point, we have to ask the question, what on earth are you hiding that is so bad that you refuse to answer the most basic of questions? What is so bad that you are willing to break the law? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
Our next speaker is Mandy Moriera.
Welcome, Ms. Moriera.
Hello, Dr. Branch and board members. My name is Mandy Moriera at thirty-four seventy-five Downs Creek Drive. I'm here once again to discuss the potential mold at Oconee County Elementary School. I was here before, no one contacted me, no one has spoke with me, no one emailed me. Mr. Hammond was the only one that reached out to begin with, and thank you for doing that. From the last meeting, our plea as concerned parents was to have professional mold testing done. It was not. The outside pod where my child is. This is the classroom that only had new carpet installed during spring break. There was no testing done. It was adhesive, nobody believes it. Okay, nobody. That teacher is sick. She is leaving now, a wonderful teacher that is leaving now and has already put her resignation in. The gym floor that was sealed during spring break. The teacher has been sick. Our coach is leaving, she's put her resignation in. The other coach is leaving. She has been so sick, she tested it herself, it came back positive. I was in the gym two weeks ago, I put on the spring carnival, I'm a huge volunteer, I'm in the school all the time. It was awful. Go in there and look, smell, open your mouth. If you did a walkthrough, you would know. It was in my mouth all night long while I volunteered and had people come up to me in tears about this. Teachers will not come forward, staff is not coming forward, they're going to lose their jobs and they're going to get relocated. This is serious business. Students are sick. Parents won't even come because they're terrified, but they're sure are calling, they sure are letting people know. Their kids are sick, they're leaving this school, they're touring other schools. This is serious and it's being covered up. It's been going on for a very long time. Our school nurse has put in her resignation, she can't deal with it anymore, okay? It's absurd. We have a second petition in circulation right now. We have two hundred and thirteen signatures and it's growing. We want professional mold testing, not walkthroughs by the school, okay? You guys aren't professionals, I'm not a professional, nobody in this room that I know of is a professional. I've said it before, we have to have a change. And if it's not now, it'll be when Dr. Branch leaves. Multiple staff members have dehumidifiers in their room, they're emptying them every two to three hours. They've done humidity tests, they're in the seventies and they're in the eighties. Parents are looking at other schools, they're going to leave. What if this was your home? What if this was your wife and your children sick? Would you tell them no? Or would you go get a professional test done? This is very serious. It's all over the schools and especially in the elementary. Please reconsider.
Thank you, Ms. Moriera.
Our next speaker is Brandy Herndon.
Welcome, Ms. Herndon.
Hello, my name is Brandy Herndon, I reside at ten twenty Echo Trail, Watkinsville, Georgia. Some of you should remember me well. Sorry to say that I'm here yet again about the ongoing mold issues at Oconee County Elementary School. I say yet again because I brought this to your attention way back in the fall of two thousand eighteen in great detail. I have this little notebook full of all the information from then. I believe I addressed the board at three separate meetings, I received the typical no response at those meetings, and insufficient mailed responses with one simply stating that my concerns were noted. If the problem had been handled swiftly and appropriately at that time, we wouldn't be here now with the same, albeit worsening, issue. We, the parents and stakeholders, want, request, and quite frankly, demand independent, reputable, and appropriate testing and remediation be conducted on the entire Oconee County Elementary School campus. The parents are prepared to pay for that testing to be done, and if you deny that request, it will only prove your unwillingness to be transparent, honest, and forthcoming about the extent of the very real issues and problems. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Merrill Herr.
Welcome.
Good evening, you'll have to forgive me, I'm a little overwhelmed at hearing the news that Nurse Lori is not going to be with us next year. My name is Merrill Herr, I'm at twelve fifty-one Calls Creek Circle. I'm the parent of two Oconee County Elementary School, excuse me, two O County School students, one who is at OCES. When you think about Oconee County Schools five years from now, what do you envision? What do you hope for? Imagine teachers, administrators, and support staff truly flourishing in their roles. OCS employees generously and creatively using their gifts, training, and abilities to serve their students to reach their full potential. In this vision of the future, the board and district office graciously welcome constructive feedback from employees. And as an opportunity for learning and growth, and when an employee brings a concern about their wages or work conditions to the administration, that employee is met with compassion and care. Employees in this future feel like they matter, that if they were to leave the district, they would leave an unfillable hole. But here in the present, we have to confront a reality. How the district office has responded to concerns about mold at OCES has highlighted that in addition to having a potentially toxic building, you have a potentially toxic work culture in this organization. Our OCES chiefs are taught to be responsible, respectful, and safe. But it's irresponsible, it's disrespectful, and it's unsafe to adequately address mold issues that are brought to your attention by your employees. As someone who studies leadership and how people experience their work, I can tell you that toxic work cultures cause physical and psychological harm to their employees. And when a public school district is a toxic workplace, it affects our entire community. When a beloved teacher, fed up with feeling like she doesn't matter, resigns, it's costly. Practically, the district has to spend time and money to hire her replacement and train the replacement. But her leaving and the circumstances around it also cause organizational trauma at the school level. The employees who are left at Oconee Elementary are going to grieve her loss. They're going to fear what may happen to them if they also raise concerns. And as a result, they're going to bring a little less than their best to school each day. Trust between those employees and this district office is going to erode. Personally, my child loses a favorite teacher, he won't get her hugs next year. My middle schooler won't get the smiles in the morning car rider line. It's a loss to our family, but multiply that by a few hundred more families and you see the loss of losing one amazing teacher, but we're not losing just one this year. We're losing more than that across our district. Our employees are leaving. This past August, Forbes published a list of greatest workplaces in Georgia. Oconee County Schools was not on it, but Cobb, Gwinnett, Muskogee, Barrow, and Cherokee Counties were. What if we could be there too? High employee satisfaction, high employee engagement lead to better outcomes for our employees and employees, employers and employees, and better outcomes for our students. If we're going to boast about being the best county school system in the state of Georgia, let's be the best at creating environments where our employees flourish. My hunch is that the outcomes that we want for our students will follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg DeBacher.
My name is Greg DeBacher, ten thirty, Blue Beach Point, Athens, Georgia, three zero six zero six. I'm not going to add a lot of facts or kind of anything else to the conversation. I'm here to be another voice and another person to go on record to say, you know, I signed the petition and I support testing at the school to figure out what's going on and to improve dialogue. I hate I have to be up here, you know, on a Monday night to find a babysitter. But we've, you know, it, as people have said, we've lost teachers, we're losing a nurse over this, which just seems out of context for a district like us, for a school system like us. So I'm not directly aware of the mold issues. My wife has reported symptoms going into the school, and I think she's heard multiple complaints from other teachers about the humidity levels, about smells. So it seems an easy task to take us up on a testing, allow a third-party professional to do whatever the best-practice testing is, whether that's surface testing, air testing, and figure out what's going on, share the results, and, you know, follow through on any recommendations from those results. I guess, in addition to the mold, I think the other issue that's been touched on is, you know, some form of communication breakdown that's going on here, that teachers don't feel empowered to have a conversation with administration and then with the district. Again, I'm coming at it without a ton of information, but it, that seems concerning. And so I hope, you know, I'm talking to the board as per the rules, but I think I'm really talking through the board to figure out what's going on on an operational matter they otherwise wouldn't get involved in, to help figure out what's going on from an operational standpoint, to report back, and to help ensure that testing's done and help figure out what the communication issue is and resolve it. So I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Sarah Danis.
Ms. Danis, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Danis, and I am here with additional concerns about OCES. I am an OCHS proud graduate and now an Oconee parent. Overall, we've had wonderful experiences with my children in Oconee Schools. I have a third grader that is in the outside pod at OCES, and I have a tenth grader that is at OCHS. And on a side note, we've been so pleased at you all implementing the SRO program. It's amazing to see the connection that Officer Dorsey is already having with all of the high schoolers, and it's just like they all have an uncle there and they know that there's somebody that they can turn to when things come up and just, you know, somebody else that's in their corner for them. But that's not why I am here tonight, very simply. If someone was trying to break down your front door, you'd call the police. If your kitchen stove caught on fire, you'd call for the fire department. If your toilet is overflowing and you couldn't fix it yourself, you'd call a plumber. And so it seems like if you had mold or mildew growing in your home, you would call an expert for that as well. You'd scrub the walls once or twice, and if it kept happening, you'd probably call someone to fix it. So it seems simple enough that we could alleviate a lot of this concern and all these parents that are bugging you by having a professional mold remediation company come and inspect things and make sure that there is not an issue in the third grade outside pod and in the gym, and of course, anywhere else in the school as well. But every day, we're forcing our kids and the staff and our babies, our children, to walk into it every day. We wouldn't let them sit like normal in a house where the door is being broken down by a bad guy, and we wouldn't let them sit in the, in the kitchen while the stove was on fire or wade through waste in the bathroom on the floor. So we know there was an issue, a similar, somewhat similar issue back in two thousand eighteen, my high schooler was there, and they had to remediate the mildew back then. So it's an older school, it doesn't seem out of the realm of possibilities that it could be something that's happening again, and it just seems like it would be a lot better to err on the side of caution. So if we want to make sure we're continuing to keep our kids safe, and we'd love your help with that, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Ransom, that concludes public communication.
Thank you, Mr. Cockwood. Next, we have action items, Dr. Branch.
Yes, sir. Board members, we have several action items tonight. First up is the CTA local plan and grants, and we'd recommend that that be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Branch, need a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Hammond? Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes five zero.
Okay, up next, we have Oconee County High School field trips, the girls' varsity and JV basketball camp this summer. We recommend approval as presented.
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack? All in favor? Passes five zero.
Next one, we are very excited, and I know our administrators at our schools are excited about. We recommend that the board approve rest truck center with a proposed bid of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for two fourteen passenger activity buses. A reminder to the board that this will not require the CDLs that our large buses require, just some local training, so a lot more staff will be able to use these. We recommend as approved.
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Ms. Parish?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero.
Okay, up next is North Oconee's door hardware improvements. We'd recommend Classic City Doors and Hardware with a proposed bid of eighty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-one, twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. What this will do is standardize our liking mechanisms for all doors throughout our school system.
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Ms. Hammond, all in favor? Passes five zero.
Up next, Oconee County High School parking lot addition. Want to thank our student advisory panel that we meet with on a regular basis. We were meeting with our students along with Dr. White and his staff, and it got brought to our attention about parking challenges at Oconee County High School, which required a study of our lots, and as you've heard presented, we determined that when we did the addition, we did not do additional lots, and so we needed to add some additional parking for the status of the kids. So staff has worked on that, presented it last week to you, and we would recommend Smith and Co. with a proposed bid of a little over eight hundred thousand dollars for the parking lot additions. Recommend approval at this time.
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Hammond?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes five zero.
Okay, our next paving project would be the maintenance facility paving. This will make sure that all of our facilities are paved, it's the last one that has no paving, and so our maintenance staff's very excited about this option to better care for our equipment. And so we'd recommend Magnum paving with a proposed bid of one hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Ms. Parish?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero.
If pleases the board, we can take both the tentative federal budget and general fund budget at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll recommend approval as presented for both of those items.
Still moved.
Mr. Hammack?
Second.
Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes five zero.
We do have a need to adjourn to executive session, and we need a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Parish. Need a second? Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes five zero. We are adjourned.